Is it excused? Wes Ryan?
Here.
Roger Sprague?
Here.
Susan Walkie?
Here.
Kip Ward?
Here.
And I apologize, I skipped past the one part I need to add. If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comments section. Comments or testimonies on agenda items listed in our public hearing comment will be taken at that time. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you so much. Consent agenda items. The consent calendar consists of items of a repeat or routine nature considered under a single action. A counselor may remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration upon request. We have the minutes of the meeting for August 24th, 2015, city council meeting. Minutes of the meeting, August 31st, 2015, city council work session.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I request that the minutes be pulled from this agenda and moved to the next meeting. We haven't had a chance to review the-
Both sets of minutes?
Yes, both.
Can you use a thought on that?
We haven't had a chance to review those minutes yet.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a motion?
That was a motion.
I'll second it.
A motion to second to pull the minutes of the meeting for August 24th and August 31st, 2015, until our next meeting date. Anyone have a date on that?
Twenty-five.
January 25th, 2016. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, now's the time for comments from citizens present on agenda and non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or comment, or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others, and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by the citizen. The mayor has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. We only have three, so I don't see any reason to limit times. And Joe Francis-Calk, please.
Mr. Mayor, city council. My name is Joe Francis-Calk and I live in Lincoln City. I've been doing some research and I came across three words that Lincoln City has won, and I just wanted to mention those today. The first one is Lincoln City was named one of the top affordable vacation destinations in the United States. It is, it was the only one of two Pacific Northwest destinations, the other being Sun The TripAdvisor analyzed over 150 vacation destinations across the U.S. by comparing the price of two-bedroom vacation homes during the months of June through August 2015. Out of over 150 destinations, TripAdvisor pared it down to the best hotspots that offer the most bang for the visitor's buck. The list reflects 29 affordable destinations that are compelling, interesting, and pack a seriously fun punch at the management, at a manageable cost. So that's, congratulations on the vacation rentals that are here. In April of 2015, Family Vacation Critic recognized Lincoln City as one of the 10 best beaches for families in 2015. Lincoln City was the only destination in the Pacific Northwest to make the list. The article highlights the many family-friendly activities in Lincoln City such as flight flying, kite-flying, instead of flight flying. Okay, kite-flying, beachcombing, crabbing, clamming, and the popular finders-keepers promotion. So the seven miles of smiles has been recognized. And the third one, Lincoln City is number six on this one. This is the Road Snacks, 10 Worst Places to Live in Oregon. Their reasons are the household income is $29,686, the crime is the sixth highest in the state, and the house vacancy rate is 31 percent. Lincoln City is a beautiful place along Route 101. However, it's one of the poorest places in Oregon. Residents are almost the most underpaid, and nearly one in three homes are vacant, and crime here is very high, according to the FBI. One ray of sunshine is the weather here is rated nearly the best in the state. I think this has an opportunity for us to improve that. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that over.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to point out that, that those crime stats are based on 8,000 population, when in fact, we have 35,000 to 40,000 during the summer of the visitor season. And if you calculate that into the equation, our crime statistics are a heck of a lot less than what they're showing. And we have tried to get them to understand that, but that goes right over their head.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Mr. Clemmons?
Do you need a dress? I'm sorry. Okay. Mayor and counselors, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to talk about something that I came across on my online subscription to the NewsGuard. I was startled to read last week that the prospective VRD ballot measure initiatives were rejected by the city. And I was kind of awestruck, like why would, why would the city try to block the public from getting their intent and their will? That just doesn't make sense to me. Why, why the city would, would want to block their own constituents from speaking their mind in a, at the ballot box? And I was troubled by that. I think that you all are, represent the people and represent the voters, and so I, again, I just, I'm really, really troubled when, you know, it's an opportunity for the citizens and the registered voters to speak their, their will, how that would be blocked. I, I think I understand possibly why though, because last time, the voters spoke their will, it was quite contrary to what, what's being pushed at this body. And so, you know, I urge you to reconsider that. I don't know how that works. I'm not a expert on all that, but I, I just, I struggle with that on the surface. You know, I'm, I know it's been a hotly contested debate, but goodness, if, if there's anything, it would seem that, I mean, at a time like that, you know, let the voters decide, but someone blocked that. I'm not sure who. I don't, I don't know how that all works, but it's, it's been blocked and they're rejected, and apparently they go no further. So, that's very unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if you could take the opportunity, I'm sure that Mr. Clemmons indicated he read the article in the NewsGuard, and I-
Got it right there.
-thought the article was pretty explanatory. Maybe if you couldn't, staff could, as to, the city didn't block anything. Could we have some clarity on that right now? While it's hot?
Feel free.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add to that. The initiatives were rejected because they failed to meet the requirements that state has for initiatives. There was no, there was no blocking of it, it's just that they failed to submit the initiatives in, accurately, in order to meet the state requirements.
In the opinion of the city recorder?
They failed to meet the, they failed to meet the requirements of the state. Now, there is an appeal process, and that can be appealed, and that was sent to the, to the author of the petitions, and, and if he feels that, if he feels that the city is, is incorrect, then he can appeal that. But they, they, they did not, they were, they were rejected because they failed to meet the state's requirements for initiatives. Thank you.
Okay. I, I've read the article. I kind of reread it four or five times because I was, you know, at first dumbfounded, and I thought, let me be reasonable and read it. So I've read it, I'll be, I don't pretend to understand all of that. One of the, I think on the second ballot measure initiative, let's adopt sensible B and B in vacation rental rules, one of the statements in there was must contain full text, missing 45 pages of text, and it must be underlined or struck through. You know, some of those things felt to me, and I don't know the ins and outs of what the state requires for a ballot measure initiative to be approved, but my sense was, if the city didn't want this on the ballot, that I guess, maybe it points to sort of a lack of trust because of what we've been through.
It's not an accurate statement.
A lack of trust?
No. It's not an accurate statement that the city did something to try to block-
Oh, you need to get near your microphone.
It's not an accurate statement to say that the city was trying to block someone who's filed initiative.
Well, that's my-
Our responsibility is that when they come in, they are reviewed, and they are reviewed based upon the state law. If they meet those state standards, then they go forward. It did not meet the state standards, therefore it did not go forward, and that's also why there is an appeals process.
Okay.
If the, if the petitioner feels that it was wrong. But there was no attempt at any level to try to block Mr. Skipper from submitting or going forward with his initiative.
And I can respect that, and I, when I say, and perhaps the word block is my, that's an opinion that I have, just because I think I'm, I'm so overwhelmed with history of, this has been a long, I mean, I've only been involved in this at some level for a couple of years, probably. Mr. Anderson and I had conversations, I asked him, what's this all about, a couple of years ago, two and a half years ago, probably? And my house was not a VRD for nine years that I owned it, the first nine years. Now it is kind of backed into a corner a bit to, you know, get in or get lost, you know, kind of thing. And so, perhaps my statement of a lack of trust and all that is just my own hangup. You know, I, I've struggled with the whole process. And so, when I saw this, I thought, well, of course they're rejected, you know? So whether it's an accurate statement or not, it's a perception, I guess, that I have. And so I'm not stating it as fact, it's a perception that I have, if that helps, Mr. Chandler. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hoover?
See if I can get it right tonight. Mayor Williams, members of the council. I'm excited by this new format where the counselors get to question the people giving public comment, and the people giving public comment get to ask questions and respond back, so I'll take advantage of that tonight since that's a new format. I was perplexed this week because I had two people approach me and ask me what the new requirements were for VRDs. And so I went back and I listened to the last two city council meetings, and it seems to me that we have three standards. We have if you have a number written on an application, which is the estimated number of days, you're being allowed to keep the estimated number of days for some inexplicable reason. You have people who are signing up for new applications, which are limited to 90 days, that was very clearly stated. And then we have this third ambiguous category, which the city manager answered a number of times. If you have a VRD that doesn't have a number of days listed on it, and you are reapplying for a new VRD or renewing it, you're to the existing or the present standard. So by my count, that's three different ways we're doing VRDs. Two are very clearly stated. If you have a number, you get to keep that number for now. If you're applying for a new one, you're limited to 90 days. But nobody really wants to say if that third one is the 90 days or an unlimited number of days, the number of days you want to use it. And I think that's disingenuous. I think that's cutting corners, I think that's trying to talk around a subject, I think that's the same situation that the previous speaker's talking about, where people are saying, come on, we're asking a really straight answer. And you guys may not like the fact that it's not an easy answer, or, as our city manager said, we're not allowed just to change the rules because we've decided we want to change the rules. But when there's VRDs being given the ability to operate based on three different scenarios, and one of the three scenarios isn't defined, it's just, it's our current policy, people deserve to have an answer to the question. What is the current policy? What do those people, a majority of maybe 400 of them, fall into? I think it's a very straightforward question, I think that people deserve a straightforward answer.
I think, I believe I, I did ask that in a December meeting, and I-
Well, but I've heard the last two weeks as questions, because people weren't sure in the last two meetings.
Right. So I'm- I finished-
I'm, I'm asking tonight, what is that third category? Is it 90 days? Is it 180 days? Is it something in between 90 and 180? Is it the number of days that you think you should be able to rent it? What is that third category that was talked around several times that we don't know what it is?
So I'm going to summarize what I thought the answer was, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chandler, was, because I asked, since people are reapplying, it's considered a new application, and then would they be held to the same standard as any new applicant? So anyone who does not have a number would be 90 days. Is that correct, in my, what I understood?
No. That is not- Then what are the number of days a person is reapplying that doesn't have a number it can rent their house for? That's what people want to know. It's a, it's a straightforward question. If it's not 90 days, what is it?
Mr. Mayor, if I could answer that.
Okay.
We are continuing to operate as we have been operating, first. Second, that's why the city, this is why the city council is working on a new ordinance, for this very reason. And that's the answer.
But how are we currently operating? What's the dates that those people are currently operating on? Is it 90 days, 180 days, or any number of days they want? What are the, what are we currently operating under? I got two people asked me that, and the people-
Mr. Mayor, I think we've explained it about as well as we can explain it, except to simply add, this is why you've been working so hard on creating a new ordinance. But I think we've explained it about as well as we can explain it.
So, so the consequences are, is that people are having to decide whether or not they're going to cancel reservations-
No.
...for the winter months, because as Mr. Chandler says, there's no way of knowing what they're allowed to do. We've said it's not 90, but we're not saying how many it is. What is the number?
Just a second, Jim. Mr. Mayor?
First of all, no one's having to cancel any reservation-
No, not because you're making them, you made that really clear.
Jim, if we're going to have this, let him finish, please.
So, clearly the intent here is we have a deep consideration for people that have vacation rental dwellings, and we've responded that way out of fairness to try to-
Go ahead.
So, we've responded that way, and, to help people feel non-threatening, if they rented last year, they can rent this year. And that's about as good as you can get it. No one's coming after anyone unless they're-
So how much can they rent this year, Mr. Ward?
Okay, I can, I can tell you that. Go ahead. It's accessory use, and there's no fixed number, legally defined number, so each one-
As long as these people can hang their hats on, there's no legally defined number, and there's no fixed number, then I can take that back to my clients, and the people watching on TV can go with that.
Mr. Appicello?
Just a second. Sir? I got this.
Mr. Appicello?
Your honor, there is a process for land use enforcement which involves either revocation hearing before the planning commission or a notice of violation from the planning director. That is how the accessory use limit, a discretionary land use standard, is enforced. There is no current objective number. Now, if you did have a number on your land use application, and you're renting more than the number you wrote on your land use application, you're pretty much waving a red flag that you're violating the accessory use limit.
So then if, if a person has a pre-existing-
Just a second. Please wait, one second. Were you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
So then if a person has a pre-existing VRD that doesn't have a number that they're estimating they're going to use, they could rent it 365 days a year right now by what I heard Mr. Appicello say, because there's no number-
No. No. The question for the-
And what's the number?
The question for the planning commission would be, should this land use approval and license for the vacation rental be revoked because they rented 296 days in, in the calendar year? That, is that 296 days incidental and subordinate to the main use? That's the discretionary land use decision the planning commission would make in a revocation hearing.
So, so what I'm hearing then is that rent your house, and you might end up in a revocation hearing, because we're not going to tell you how many days you can rent your house for if you fall into this category of it's not a new application, and you don't have a number of days. So you have to take a chance. And that's what I'm speaking to Mr. Ward's comment. I understand the city hasn't told anybody that they need to make cancellations.
Mayor?
But since there's no number of days that a person can know that they're allowed to rent their VRD, then they're in the Mr. Appicello category of rent it, but we may determine by accessory use that you violated it, but we're not going to tell you what it takes not to violate it. I think the people of Lincoln City deserve a straight answer.
We're way beyond the five minutes allowed, and-
I understand, Mr. Sprague, that you don't want to talk about it.
Plenty of discussion, I think it's time to close it off.
All right. Number one, that's my job. I'll take care of that part.
That's what I was suggesting you do, your job.
Thank you so much. Well, Mr. Sprague? I will. Thank you very much.
Do it.
Mr. Sprague? I don't need the comments from you about this, all right? Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Hoover, your time is up. Thank you very much. All right. Anyone who did not sign up that would like to have something to say tonight? All right, moving on. We are, public hearing comment, public comment, none. Ordinances, none. Resolution, resolution 201601, a resolution, rescinding resolution 201309 of the city of Lincoln City in redesigning bank depositories and authorized signatures for checks and drafts of Lincoln City. And I'm assuming Mr. Appicello or Mr. Chandler, you-
This resolution, right now, signatures are required by our finance director and me on, on checks. If one of us are not available, in the past, the human resources director has been authorized to sign it, this resolution changes that to become the chief of police, who, when I've been absent, I've been asking him to fill in for me.
Thank you. Then I guess I'm, is everyone clear on this? Do I need to read it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I thought the resolution, the draft and the proposed resolution were, were clear. However, the memo was confusing. I, I think, I think the memo meant to say the two signatures currently required are city manager and finance director, third and fourth check signers, according to resolution 201309, were the human-
Human resources-
...director and the council president.
Right.
And that's not what the memo says.
Help me out.
The, the memo was confusing, I, I think-
But not the resolution?
Right, the resolution, yeah.
Okay, so are we prepared to vote on the resolution, then?
I am.
So the, so the, Mr. Mayor, the, my understanding is the only change to the resolution is to insert chief of police rather than human resource director.
Exactly, as a signatory. Right.
I'm wondering, love resolutions, if this wouldn't be an opportunity, since it's in front of us, look to staff, is there a reason why we couldn't insert another banking institution? Not that we necessarily bank with them, but to have it ready so, if we so desired? I'm liking to think about buying and using local businesses, so, you know, Oregon Coast Bank is certainly a local institution, and I just wonder what the impact would be of making that change, just inserting Oregon Coast Bank in section one, even though we don't have any accounts with them.
Where is Oregon Coast Bank?
Pardon? Like, maybe Debbie could ask us. I just, when, when you look at this, you know, in one hand, we, we talk about buy local, and here's an opportunity to-
Are you-
Well, then also too-
-through to Columbia Bank?
No. Oregon, Oregon Coast Newport?
Oh, yes, okay.
And then also, the, the fact that Bank of America is transitioning into another institution, do we need to include that?
If, if you wanted to change banking services, which due to the recent change, you know, certainly a topic that we're having a discussion on, I, I believe we need to go through a bid process and not here identify exactly who that other bank would be.
All right, then do we need a motion to direct you to that, or just to?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure exactly how our services are going to be affected from this change that Bank of America did.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big, it's a big job changing banks.
Right, I understand that.
We have been talking about going out to bid, but-
Okay. Do you need direction from us on that, or is that just something you can initiate on your own?
I can initiate it on my own, or you can give me direction, whatever you'd like.
Well, I'm going to agree with Counselor Anderson that I think it'd be a good idea to, at least to get a bid from a local.
In, in the past, we've been wanting, you know, a bank that has experience with government rent, and particularly with government bonding, and that's part of the reason why we haven't gone with a local bank in the, in the past, but, like you say, things are changing, so.
I'd move to approve resolution 201601.
Second. Motion to second. Any further discussion?
Discuss.
01?
21.
21601.
Okay, excuse me, a ref, refer, okay, excuse me.
Discussion, question. We're listing Bank of America, Wells Fargo, Bank of the West, and the local government investment pool. Why couldn't we just add Oregon State Bank, Oregon Coast Bank on there as an additional? We don't have to change banks, we would just be adding one.
That'd be up to Ms. Van Mullen. Now, does that, is that a fair question, or is it what you answered before, that you need to send it out for bid before we can do that?
I guess I'm just saying, adding that bank won't necessarily prevent us coming back at some time with a change to this if we end up going with a bank that's not on that list. But if you want to add that now, I don't think that's a problem.
I was just thinking that, as Mr. Anderson said, that buying local is certainly, should be a priority, I would think.
We have-
And we could do the, we could have an account set up with the signatories, all four signators in place, and, and maybe not use it, but at least it's there in case we need to use it, and it's already set up.
Mr. Chairman, or, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Actually, I'd stay with my motion to go with just the resolution as is. My point has been made, and I heard staff indicate that they'd come back to us. They've received the, the idea, and, you know, I think we'll hear again about banking, and so I'd, it'd give us more of a chance to weigh in at that point.
Okay.
All right. We have a original motion and second. Any further discussion? Do I need a roll on this one? Let's go ahead and roll.
They can do it, sure. Ryan?
Yes.
Sprague?
Yes.
Walkie?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Special Order of Business now, Visitor and Convention Bureau report. Zip code steady and focus group results. Mr. Drystat, looking very dapper tonight. I've got a question.
I'm just practicing for, for budget time. I was always told to dress like this when you're asking for money.
You all got a weird question. What are those things on the desk? Those towers, what are those?
They look like speakers.
They're speakers for who? For who? Oh, okay. Look at them, week after week, I have everything to ask, what the heck are they?
Well, I'd, I'd like to thank council for your time, and I promise I'll, I'll get through this fairly quickly. But when I, I came to town, talking to my staff and other folks, we seemed to have a lot of questions we didn't have answers to. And they were vital questions that really affect how we advertise, when we advertise, how we spend our marketing money. And without answers, it's kind of ready-fire aim. You know, you're doing things, crossing your fingers, and, and hoping that they work. I really wanted to move the department to where we were making data-driven decisions, that we had some research to fall back on, and to the best of our ability, we were spending the money as wisely and as directly and effectively and efficiently as we could. The two questions where I couldn't find great answers, where- The two questions where I couldn't find great answers were, why do people come here? How do they perceive Lincoln City? And the other one was, where do they come from? And we had a vast range of opinion, but no real solid answer to the former. And to the latter, the best we had was a study done by Travel Oregon that talked about where people who visit the Oregon coast, where they're from, which is okay if you make the assumption that the person who goes to Coos Bay is the same as the person who goes to Seaside, who's the same as the person who goes to Cannon Beach, is the same person who goes to Lincoln City. I didn't think that was probably true or right. The information we needed didn't exist. We had to figure out a way how to get it ourselves. And I really have to do a hats off to the lodging industry here in town. KIP was a big help in making introductions. Gary from San Castle was another one who was just invaluable. And it was a really nice experience. I never had anyone tell me no. Every hotel I approached, it's like, we'll do the best we can and just let us know, you know, what you need. And there were two requests. One was, can you set it up to where we can talk to your guests and conduct some focus groups? And that's the first thing I'll talk about. And the other one was, can you go back into your reservation system and give me the zip codes from check-ins by month, calendar year 2014, from January through December? And the closest thing I ever got to a no was, my res system only lets me go back 30 days or 90 days or whatever it was. We had some technical reasons why some of the hotels couldn't. There was one who will remain unnamed that came to my office with a giant box and said, here they are. You know? But, and Liz in my office, again, hats off to her, she went through all those, converted all those zip codes to markets, sorted them out, and really was the person that allowed us to do the analysis to what I'm going to show you here. So, the first thing I want to talk about is the focus groups and what we did and how we did it. We talked to everybody in town who had an opinion about what Lincoln City was and we boiled it down to 24 of them. You know, what's Lincoln City about? Why do people come here? We came up with 24 distinct reasons, yeah.
Who's everyone?
Anyone who would listen to me.
A resident, a business owner, a guest?
Business owners, not guests so much, but, excuse me. I talked to retailers, I talked to hotel people, just anybody who would, who would spend the time to listen to me and answer the questions about why do you think people come here? I'm not saying we have them all or I've talked to all the right people, but this was the full thing of people that, you know, positionings that we came up with. And we structured it with a moderator's guide. So every one of these did, that we did, we followed the same format, we asked the same questions and to the best of our ability, made them to where you compare one to the other. And, oh, thank you. And we also gave incentives. So, you know, if I went to somebody's hotel and said, can you please ask one of your guests to sacrifice part of their vacation, you know, we'll reward them for it. Me being me, I said, well, you know, the going rate's about 50 bucks, we'll give them each 50 bucks. And Scott, to his credit, said, no, we will not. We will give them a gift certificate to a local restaurant for $50 and they're spending that money here in town. So hats off to Scott on that one. We conducted six groups, started in August 16, we did them up through October 3, and we did a session at the farmer's market, at the cultural center, Chinook Winds, Pelican Shores, In It Spanish Head, Shear Water, and the Looking Glass. And if you look at who we talked to, they were between 45 and 64, primarily female, made under 100K, 100K a year. Most of them were married. 68% had no children under 18. They averaged two to three overnights per stay. They were staying at hotels and motels. Travel party for almost all of them was two. They were all leisure travelers. Most often, they went to the internet to do their planning. And they were all from more than 50 miles away. And we would take them through introductions and some general talk about travel, would ask them their impressions of Lincoln City, and then we got into the, the concept boards. And we had them sort them, do you like it, do you don't like it? Then we would force them into a top two, plus a couple of ones that were close to the top two. And we threw a question at the end, if you were king or queen of the universe and had unlimited money, plus a magic wand and could make Lincoln City better, what would you do? Just to see what they would come up with. And it was interesting. There were four that came out clearly on top. There was another big batch of them where they got very positive mention in a lot of groups, but not universally so. And then there was a batch that they told us were not Lincoln City. So let's look at those. Here's what we are, according to the groups we did. We're the zen zone. We're the place you come to relax. We're that relaxing vacation, and that was the most common thing people came up with. We are also a place where you discover treasures. And that, I think, is an echo of the float program that we do, but it's also the idea that you can find agates on the beach and you can go beachcombing. And off the beach, you find these wonderful things in Lincoln City that you wouldn't find anywhere else. There's great little restaurants that are one of a kind and shops, and you go exploring in the antique stores. And the idea that in every dimension you can think of, we're a great place to discover treasures, came through loud and clear. We're also a place for amazing outdoor adventures, and that speaks to the, the physical beauty of the area, the idea that we have hiking trails and beach and just all the amazing natural beauty that surrounds us here. And we didn't put this in all the groups. This is when we were trying to do that make do campaign to like bridge us from where we are to where we need to be. And we came up with seven miles of smiles. The one where I came here and said, don't get used to it, it's a make do, you know, let's see what we can do. We did a board on that, but that was only, we missed the first two groups, so we did four out of six. And in the ones that it was in, it did great. There's an old saying, I'd rather be lucky than good. I think we were lucky with this one, you know?
Isn't that how we got the name of the city there, Mr. Ward? Okay, just checking, just checking.
So...
I'm going to firebomb.
So where we ended up, and this, this wasn't, there wasn't a silver bullet, there wasn't one thing, but what Lincoln City is, is a relaxing destination with pleasant surprises for those who look, surrounded by natural beauty, and there's a full seven miles of beach in town to explore. Those are the things that came out of the group that we definitely are.
And if I could, you may have said this already, this list of zen zone through a real beach town, those were your categories and then they each would choose whether they agreed or disagreed with that.
Let me go back real quick.
It's okay.
Yes. This, this one right here was the one for where you discover treasures. So there was a headline, a concept statement.
Right, okay.
And these weren't ads.
These weren't comments from the people.
It was just to communicate the thoughts. And then there would be a picture that would represent that and then some copy underneath to, to, to give them some, some meat to the bone there.
Right, but I'm saying these were your words and then they agreed with them or didn't agree with them.
Yeah, and they discussed. I mean, when we did the sort, you know, we just sat back and let them talk and argue and did it as a team exercise. So, yeah, but what we started with were the words we put down on the boards to start the discussion stuff.
I didn't know how many people would use the word zen zones.
That one came from Diane at the Outlet Mall. That was, that was hers. And I got to hand it to her, she won. Here's what we're not, this is really interesting. We had one where we're the small town friendly beach, we're a small town and everybody's friendly and that type of thing. Friendly was okay, but we're not a small town, we're seven miles long. And they don't see it as a small town. Depot Bay maybe, you know, little town where it kind of has a center and that's it, but we're, that did not resonate with them at all. Big city shopping and small town charm, we got both of those wrong. They love the Outlet Mall, they love the antique stores, they love the shopping here, but we're not big town shopping. We're, we don't have a big department store, we're not Macy's, that didn't resonate at all. And then small town charm, well, we already told you we're not a small town. That, that one didn't click with any of the groups. A great place to try new things. We put the old campaign in to see what it would do and they're like, we're here to relax, we're not here to try new things. And that one gained no traction with anybody that we talked to, which actually surprised me quite a bit. The quirky coast, that was kind of our shot at, at doing the Portland's whole...
Keep Portland weird.
Keep Portland weird thing. Well, we may be a lot of things, but apparently we're not weird and that's not why people come here. Live beach music scene, I mean, do people come here and enjoy nightlife? I mean, do they go down to Roadhouse 101 or Snug Harbor or wherever there was a resounding? No. That's not why we're here and that's not how we see Lincoln City and that's not why we visit. Not to say those are bad things, but it's, it's not a motivator for them. And the coolest retro beach town, we've been around a long time, are we seen as kind of hip and cool and retro and no, we're not. That didn't resonate at all. And then a real beach town talked about history. That one was all about the fact that people have been coming here on vacation for well over 100 years and nobody really cared that much. So, none of these things are something I'd put in a headline in an ad. And then the gray area in between, these worked in some groups and didn't work in others, but the idea that we're the center of it all, that you can go up to Tillamook and see the cheese factory and then go down and catch the aquarium in Newport and you can go out to the Willamette Valley and drink wine, you can do it all from Lincoln City, some folks like that, some folks didn't. Not a bad thing, but it wasn't one of the really strong ones that we came across. Family beach vacation, that worked if you had a family. And if not, no, you're not. Glass float capital of the world, the folks who had done the glass experience and gone into the glass studio and blew a glass float, they're like, yeah, but everybody else, no. And there was a fair amount of people that didn't know about the glass studio. Kite flying capital of the world, same thing, if they've been to the kite festival, yeah, that, that really resonates with me and if not, maybe not so much. Pacific coast scenic byway beach, this one started out as a pit stop on the Pacific byway and we got into a lot of restroom discussions, so we, we changed that one. But the idea that you, you drive this incredible highway with all the incredible vistas and Lincoln City's just a stop, no, we're not, we're a destination for most of the folks, although some of them did, did think that was an important feature. This, then we had the, the place to watch, the idea that you watch sunsets and people and waves and that resonated with a few. This next one scared me, the world's largest air conditioner? I thought it was funny, somebody brought it up, so I put it in and like the first group were like, that's it, that's you. I'm like, oh no. What do we do now? The idea that when it's really hot in the valley or up in Portland, that, you know, it's 55 degrees here, what a great place to go. The second group we did, a woman went, what about the winter? And I was like, thank you, you know? So sometimes we are, and with the right people we are, but it's not the big positioning statement. Always, never the same, the idea that everything changes a lot. I think I'm seeing that for the first time with all the storms. I get onto the beach now, it's like, I don't even recognize this, everything shifted around and changed. And a lot of people saw that as cool. The, the beach for celebrations, if somebody had just had an anniversary or had gotten married here or were here for a special event, yeah, that's definitely what it is and everybody else, not so much. Culinary capital of the Oregon coast, there were a few folks that said, yeah, and, but bigger majority said, no. And the amount of awareness of the culinary center was pretty lacking, to be honest with you. We'll get into a little bit more on that later. The down-to-earth beach vacation, the beach with a lake. I mean, people who have come here, year after year after year, come here two, three times a year, didn't know we had a lake. It was amazing. I mean, Devil's Lake, we need to do a better job of letting folks know it's there, I think. It was the learning on that one.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Ocean Lake would say that we have a lake.
Good name.
So, I was just pointing out.
Shame, that wasn't the placeholder.
I did have a couple of quick questions.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, when people say they want to go to the beach and get away from it all, that basically tells us what they don't want here, because you don't want to have here what they're trying to get away from.
Right.
And that would probably be traffic and noise and that type of thing. But I'm, I'm wondering with a name like Lincoln City, that's a wonderful name, it doesn't say much. And we had talked about perhaps putting an adjective in, in front of the, the name when marketing. And that adjective, you know, back in the early 90s, the Oregon State Department of Tourism did a big research on what people were after when they traveled. And the answer was, they want the real thing. They don't want things from Mexico or the Philippines, they want a float that was found here in Lincoln City, or they want to eat in a place that's unique to Lincoln City, they want those things. And so, if, if we did use an adjective in marketing before the, the name of Lincoln City, you might use that adjective to express what they are coming to the coast for. So everyone, when they're, they're going to the beach, they say, let's go to the beach. Well, what are they going to? They want the beach, more than everything else. So, one of the suggestions that, I'm not, it's not even a suggestion, one of the things I'll bring up is, you know, you might want to try, and I know you did experiment with some of this, a name like Beach Town, Lincoln City, when you're, when you're marketing Lincoln City, or Beach Side, Lincoln City, as far as a marketing that tells them Lincoln City and what it is that we, we offer that is unique to us, that is the real thing. And that was my only comment.
Right, and that wouldn't require any kind of boat or anything, like that's simply an addition to the name. Of course, I recommended just beach, but nobody wanted that one.
I want the beach.
And then the, the other one...
Did you have a response to that, by the way?
Um...
I don't mean to put you on the hook and by no means ever say you want to change the name of Lincoln City.
I'll, I'll let the decision on the name change reside at a higher level than my department. Yeah, I mean, we, we need to clearly define what it is, what, what Lincoln City is. And, you know, having a descriptor in front of the, the name of the city would be one way to do it. When I, when we did the focus groups, I was, I was kind of hoping for the silver bullet where it was just, boom, this is the one thing and this is why we come here. And it was a little more diffuse than that. And I, I think the, one of the reasons is, is because the city is that way. We're this long skinny thing without a center and depending on where you're staying and what you do, I think there's slightly different perceptions of, of the city. But the one thing that did come out loud and clear, and in fact, in one of the groups, we, I'm trying to think, it was the, I think it was at the Looking Glass, I'm sitting there and we're in the lobby and we're talking and it's like, you know, I just want to know, you know, why, why you folks come here on vacation. And the guy looked at me and pointed out the window at the ocean and goes, it's right there. And it may be as simple as that. So, you know, communicating beach, that's definitely the reason people come here and the clearer and simpler we can do that, the better.
Mayor, I was glad to see that the quotation, a great place or a good place to try new things, was on the, the no list. I felt all along that that was not appropriate for Lincoln City. I much prefer something like the Chinook Winds, it's better at the beach.
Yeah.
And that really, that really applies to us and it, it tells people, hey, this is the place to be.
Yep.
Well, one, I do have kind of a question, just on the, on the sampling. You did these at these locations, cultural center, Chinook Winds Casino Resort, Pelican Shores, In It Spanish Head, Shear Water, and Looking Glass, with the exception of the cultural center, hotels. Vacation rentals? Did you, did you, when you approached these people, were they actually staying at these places or...
Yeah, there, there were guests in the hotel and the general manager or the manager on duty would work with us to...
From my experience, I'm a little surprised by the information that says marital status, married partner, children, 68 had no children under 18, whether that same information would be reflected in the, in the vacation rentals.
Well, it was also time of the year. We were at peak season and schools back in session. And, and one of the questions that I'll, one of the things I'll get into toward the end of this is that we probably need to do a lot more groups. We only talked to 50 people.
Okay.
And, and that by itself is not a good sample size and that's one of the weak points of a, of a focus group. of a focus group. All right. But, you know, one of the things where I don't have a good answer right now is, do our guests vary by season? I'm guessing spring break is a lot of families, maybe young adults. I'm guessing that that peak we have in the summer is probably families, I don't know that for a fact. And when we talked, it was August through October, and it doesn't surprise me that it was older folks, no children, empty nesters.
Well, I'd be happy to run point on any vacation rental people that you'd like to speak to, maybe interview their guests.
Yeah.
If you get a good cross section.
Well, once we get to the second section of this, and start talking about the zip code study, we did have the VRD folks come in. And we were able to break some of that out separately, and it's interesting stuff.
Good.
Okay. And then the last question, what would make Lincoln City better? A lot of folks just gave us a deer and a headlight stare, we were asking them to think, and, you know, some folks did better with it than others. But where we did get input, there were three groups that said they would love a walking district, something with enough critical mass to where there were restaurants, and shops, and galleries, and things where they could just wander around and explore. There were two groups where having a boardwalk was a big deal. They would love to have, like, some, not necessarily on the beach, but someplace where they could walk and look at the beach. Another grocery store, we heard that from folks in the south end of town, there were two groups where they'd like that, something bigger, like the Safeway on the north end of town, they would like to see on the other end of town.
So, good equals bigger?
Don't shoot the messenger.
I'm just saying, I'm just asking. You have, it doesn't say another big grocery store, it says another good grocery store.
Yeah, well, good, when we talked to them, pretty much equated to bigger.
All right.
Okay. A couple of groups would love bike riding. There were two components of that. One was a place to rent bikes, and the other one was a place to ride bikes. Riding down 101 is not a good idea, but they would love something where they could ride bikes someplace conducive to bike riding and safe.
Was there any discussion of riding on the beach?
I'm trying to remember. Scott, was there talk about the fat tire bikes?
Yeah, a little.
Come forward, please, Scott. Introduce yourself.
Good evening, Scott Humbert, Marketing Manager, VCB. We did have a little discussion on bike riding, and a lot of it was that there just wasn't a conducive spot. We did get into this conversation about fat tires, biking on the beach. We have no place to rent them, most people don't own them. Our beach being seven miles long makes it very conducive to fat tire biking on the beach. So, I think we took that more as a hint that there's potential for that here, just because we don't, we can't really change the makeup of the highway bisecting the town, we don't have a lot of off-highway biking opportunities, other than trails that we might develop at some point, but the beach is already there.
I think that's the beauty of the TAF plan, is that that would be, because we have plenty of flatland there. And then just to note, if you've spoken to, who's the owner of Newport Bike? I'm losing the name. He can't keep them in stock, the rest of the fat tire bikes, and he's actually spoken to me about coming down here, but he's had some issues in the past with the city, and is hesitant to come down, but we've talked about it.
Yeah. And I don't know if you're all familiar with Travel Oregon's efforts regarding their Seven Wonders campaign that was hugely successful over the last couple of years. This year, they kind of took it from, desecrating different regions of the coast was one of the seven wonders of Oregon, and they drilled it down further into culinary and bicycling tourism, were kind of like their two focuses, and we didn't really have an opportunity to highlight Lincoln City in that area. So, I think there is opportunity with fat tire biking.
Great. Thank you, Scott, appreciate it. And then the other ones up here, each one of those got mentioned in one group, and just quickly, more beach access, a steakhouse, businesses and services right on the beach, one-stop shopping like Fred Meyer, beautification, I'm still not quite sure what high-end female adult shopping is, but somebody wanted it. More restaurants, larger roads, move things off the main highway, and outdoor dining. So, those were things that surfaced, but it was only one group a piece.
And sorry to keep interrupting, but this is fascinating to me. The more beach accesses, was there any discussion about amenities at the accesses, where, how were restrooms brought up, trash, foot washing, animal washing, things like that?
Actually, no, none of those things specifically came up. And I understand, this was probably the weakest thing, this was like the Lucky Strike Extra thing at the end, where it's like, we'll just ask it and see what we get. So, it was at the tail end of the group, and there wasn't a tremendous amount of discussion. We were just curious what might bubble up.
Good enough, thank you.
And the other takeaways and comments that came up during the groups, five groups said, we don't like the traffic. Another five groups were unaware of the culinary center, and I'll lay that back on my department. I think culinary center and culinary scene in general, we've got a lot of room for improvement there.
Yep.
You know, we just haven't told the story, and haven't told the story well. And I'm going to hopefully come back in a little while and talk about discussions we're having with the casino, and the chamber, and the Lincoln City outlets, about at least making one step to try to fix that. So, there are things in the works. And then two full groups, and most people in all the, in the other groups, being completely unaware of Devil's Lake. I just think we've got a treasure there that we just haven't let folks know about. So, again, my department's bad, we need to do a better job of letting folks know that it's there.
And I guess, I'm sorry to keep interrupting, but again, it's fascinating to me. Do you talk with the State Parks Department about these things? Because I know that their parking lot on the, was it the south end, is just terrible.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't want to go there as a vacationer, so I think it's important that we do discuss that with them, that maybe what their lack of maintenance is, is hurting us.
Yeah. Well, we've opened up dialogue with State Parks and Recs. Most of it's been around D River Plaza, but the more we get to know the folks, and the more we build that relationship, I think that'll give us an ability to have an impact in multiple places, that the State Park parking area being one of them.
Okay, thank you, sure.
I need clarification on the third item down there. Was that positive, many return trips to Lincoln City?
Oh, I'm sorry, I must have skipped over that. No, it's just in four of the groups, there was an amazing number of people that had been here many, 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 many times to Lincoln City. One of the things that speaks to is the fact that we need to be very careful to keep them happy, because they're our bread and butter, they're our base. I mean, I came into tourism through the theme park industry, and at least in that business, generally, two-thirds of your customers are repeat customers. So, you can do all the marketing in the world, you can do all the brilliant advertising in the world and everything else, but if you don't deliver, if you don't have friendly employees, if you don't deliver a good experience, if you don't deliver a good value for what they paid to get in, two-thirds of your business is at jeopardy. Which speaks volumes as to how important things like hospitality training would be, how important things like building that relationship with the community college, and building that culinary training program, and hospitality training, that's a big part of our business. And those folks here that come here all the time, all it would take would be one really bad experience to drive them off the seaside or Cannon Beach. So, that's a critical part of our tourism picture, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You know, I would suggest to you that part of the reason why there's so little interest in the lake, or so little knowledge of it, is that lake access is very difficult if you're a tourist. You don't know where they are, and they're very limited, and also, you have to have a boat. So, if you didn't bring your boat down, and, you know, know where the lake access is for you, it's a resource that just goes unused besides the people that live around it.
Yeah. And I think that gets to some parking issues, too. I mean, I'll disagree a little bit about, you have to have a boat to enjoy it, but if someone did want to bring a boat, do we have it, you know, could the site handle it? Because I know you can go to Regatta Park and enjoy that, and swim with your kids, and you can fish off the docks there, too, but for the most part, yeah.
The lake used to have some beaches, too.
And you can rent at the south end.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we do need to do a better job of putting that word out. Yeah, you've got the blue hair in rentals. My wife bought a standout paddleboard, which she's fallen off of most of the time she's gotten on it. But, yeah, I mean, there are ways to enjoy the lake, even if you don't have a boat, but we need to let people know where it is, how to do it, you know, all those things. I think the fact that you can't really see the lake from 101, people just have no idea it's over there.
There's nothing in town that says there's a lake.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I can verify that. My wife and I vacationed here for 12 years before we moved here, and we drove by that lake time and again, never knew it was there.
Yeah.
I tell your wife not to feel bad, I just started paddleboarding, and you can't paddleboard on a lake as a newbie. You need moving water.
Oh, okay.
I can do better on a river. The lake is, you just stand up, you fall over, so, she's doing fine.
I'll let her know.
Okay.
So, what it boils down to is, we need that umbrella positioning, at least what we learned from this set of groups, and this isn't the end-all and be-all, we may change our mind later, but right now, it looks like we need something that encompasses relaxation, seven miles of beach in town to explore, natural beauty, and the idea that you can come here and find treasures of many types. Again, the whole seven miles of smiles campaign, being lucky rather than good, it seems, at least for right now, to be filling the bill. If you look at the one on the far left, there's our beach with people enjoying it, the one in the middle shows natural beauty, and the one to the right has some of the treasures you can find on the beach. We're finding the campaign has legs, it's flexible, and it allows us to do a number of things. That's not to say I might not come back in six months or a year and go, all right, we found the magic bullet, and here's what we need to change. But the make-do that I thought I was going to throw away the second we got the groups done, is doing a little bit better than I thought it would. So, for the time being, anyway, we're going to see what we can do with that seven miles of smiles line. Now, as I mentioned before, focus groups, they're a great tool for identifying a range of opinion out there. They're a terrible tool on letting you know how many people hold those opinions. So, I think this gave us an idea of the range, and people did aggregate to some of them, so they're probably pretty good, but we really need to do follow-up to get beyond that group of 50 people that we talked to, to get to where we are right now. And, excuse me. And again, all the groups we conducted were after peak summer season, so we might get a different story from those folks, and I'll guarantee you they're different than the folks that are here during the summer. And there was only six locations, and, Don, to your point, we didn't talk to people staying in VRDs, and there are segments that we still need to talk to, you know, this was the first shot.
And campers, the campgrounds, the RVers.
Yeah, yeah. We've got a lot of work to do yet, but this is our first glimpse.
Perfect. Not questioning that at all.
And, you know, again, we'd like to do more groups. One of the things I'd like to do long-term, and it's going to be expensive, so I need to make sure that we're ready to do it and do it right, is to go up to markets where people come from, and find people to do beach vacations, but don't go to Lincoln City, and try to get an idea of how they perceive that competitive set, and if there's anything we could do to convince them to switch which town they go to. At that point, we need to hire an operator, and get a focus group facility, and do recruiting, and all that stuff. I want to make sure that we think, we've got enough information to do it right, but eventually, that's something I'd like to do, to see if we can convert somebody from one beach town to another, or one vacation destination to another.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but you got me thinking about this again. Is there any thought on combining resources, Depot Bay, Newport, and making it a central Oregon? I mean, Council of Ward has brought up a great point, and I go back to it over and over, and I think you brought it up, is Lincoln City is a hub, but we need to cooperate with the other cities around us to make that work.
I have a lunch coming up that'll be Tillamook, us, and Newport, and that's going to be one of the things I'll bring up.
I'll be meeting with the mayors from Yawhatz, Depot Bay, Toledo, and Newport next week, so if there's anything you'd like me to ask or pass along.
Okay, we'll compare notes on that.
Okay.
We're also getting set up to do quantitative surveys, where with focus groups, you learn what questions to ask, or where you think the, you know, the productive things would be. Once you get through that phase, if you really want to confirm it, you go to a quantitative study. So, quantitative doesn't work by itself, because you don't really know the questions to ask. The two of them work wonderfully together. I think we learned enough to know what questions to ask, so we can do surveys, and we can do surveys to the folks that have subscribed to our e-newsletter, and also the folks on our social media challenge. We have 21,000 people who want to hear from us. We just modified the signup sheet, where there's a checkbox now, that asks if you wouldn't mind taking a survey now and again from us. And we'll be sending an email out to everybody, asking them if they'd like to participate in a survey, and get a group of folks that we can start a dialogue with online. And that would let us firm up the positioning, that'll let us do things like test event concepts, that'll give us the ability to ask them any kind of questions that we want, which will be great, and do it efficiently and effectively, because you can do it via electronic survey.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Have you targeted any specific demographics now, as a result of your study? Are you looking at?
Given that this is like a couple weeks old, not yet.
Do you anticipate doing that? And do you have any idea of what they might be, that you're going to be looking for?
Well, see, again, it gets to what we haven't learned yet. And it also gets to, when's the vacation planning time period? Like, if you tell me I want more businesses in September, I'll guarantee you that September is not the time to talk to those folks. It's going to be a month or two out, you know? So, I've been talking to the research folks up at Travel Oregon, saying, can you help me on this, you know, on any of this at all? And they're looking at running some custom tabs and whatnot on the Longwood survey. But, you know, what we need to do, and it's another one of those knowledge gaps right now, is figure out how that target varies by season. I've got information from them, and again, it's for the entire coast, not just us, and I went and said, can you break this out by month or by season, and tell me whether or not it varies? That wouldn't be ideal, because it's the whole coast, but it's a lot better than what I've got right now, which is nothing.
So, Joe Francis testified earlier, or spoke earlier, and that we were the most affordable beach town. And I question whether we want to be the most affordable beach town. I would like to be a beach town that has good value, but I don't, I hate that when we, I don't like when we, I want people that come here to have disposable income, because that makes higher wages.
Yeah.
And another concern that I had is, even if you do your job, which you are wonderfully, thank you, we invite people to, you're successful, we get somebody to come into Lincoln City, and we have a lot of community blight. And it's kind of like, you're going out on a date, and they look real attractive, and it's a first date, and you get with them, and they've got terrible teeth. You're not likely for a second date, and that second date, and third date, and fourth date are very easy. You market them once, and they're yours, rather than having to hustle, always getting new. And also, the same thing that works for tourists, also works for businesses that we're trying to court. We can't have that blight and get the upscale business that has the money that we need, they just won't come here, because why would you, if you have to have that? So, I was just wondering, your thoughts, and if you agree with those, or if you think to those, how, what are your thoughts on it? I'm not trying to drag you out into deep water.
No, I know. I'll yell, look, there's a puppy, and run the other way if I do. We, if you look at the classic definition of marketing, it's priced, price, product, promotion, and distribution. You can mess with the price, you can promote it any kind of different ways, you can make it available to people a thousand different ways, but if you don't have the product, none of it works. You know, there was an old David Ogilvy quote, where he said, brilliant marketing behind a bad product acts like the engines of an airplane in a nosedive, it only hastens the crash. So, to your point, yeah. And, you know, if two-thirds or better of our visitors are repeat, if you don't deliver a quality experience, if people come in and see blight, if they're not treated well in a restaurant, if they don't get great a restaurant, if they don't get great service in a hotel, you've got two-thirds of your business in jeopardy. So, I agree with you wholeheartedly. The more we can make the town look like a quality experience, the more we can do to make sure that people are treated as a guest and have a pleasant experience, that will give us more business than I could ever give you with a commercial or a promotional program or any kind of marketing. I mean, I can bring them in once, but it's up to everybody else to make sure they come back.
Well, and that gets, I know Mr. Anderson, when he was mayor, brought up the same thing I did, is, you know, the standards within our city and how businesses represent themselves. And not just the businesses, but the city itself too, you know, our restrooms and our amenities, trash cans, you know, those great concrete obelisks we have that say you're going to be fined, that everyone pulls up to. But we do need to do a better job of that and that's why I would love to bring that up, you know, in another council meeting to discuss further. I've heard a couple of times that we need to do a better job once we get them here. And one thing that concerns me, and I don't know if it's feasible for the VCB to do it, but I think we need to have some money somewhere set aside to help business owners become a little more savvy in the social side, social media side. I can talk to any number in a day and they'll say, no, I don't have Facebook, I don't know how to work it, I don't tweet, I don't do this, I don't do that. Now, I've signed up for every course that the college has, they've got like five coming up, and I've signed up for every one of them, because I'm a bit of a neophyte at that. Maybe that's a question for later in budgeting or maybe we can talk, but I think we need to dedicate some funds to that, that says, we're here to support the businesses in a certain fashion to help them get up to speed in these things that will, you know, back up what you're doing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, just while you've got that thought. We do that and have done that, let me say, we have done that. Through urban renewal and the economic development, we've done grants and funding to the Small Business Development Center.
Right.
Where anybody, any business in the urban renewal district can take a free class on just that kind of stuff.
Right, right.
So, I think there's, it's there. We probably don't promote it enough, but I know David Price pushes it every chance he can.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
But you're right on. I think that's the, that's why we do it.
Right.
It's good to bring, keep bringing that.
It's critical, yeah. Oh, and then one question that's coming to my mind, and you may not be able to answer, is how do we convert a visitor to a citizen? Wow, I've never been asked to take that step before. What are your thoughts on that? What would, how many people, I mean, do we ask that? You know, what would it take, you know, what would it take to close the deal today, folks? I mean, what would it take, is this somewhere you would want to live, I guess would be a good question to ask?
I mean, if, any place that's a great place to visit is usually a great place to visit because it's also a great place to live.
I wouldn't want to live in Disneyland, but.
There are people that would buy time shares there, trust me. So, yeah.
Again, just a thought, something to chew on.
Yeah, well, I mean, and it's.
It's really, and I, I love what you're doing, okay? And I'm not being critical, but I brought this up before, I think when we were talking about the Nell Scott Gap. It's great that we're doing all these things for visitors, but we need citizens. We really need citizens here. And I would like to see, just keeping that in the back of our minds in everything we do.
I have a feeling that that question has a lot of pieces. Some of them might be in my wheelhouse, a lot of them aren't. And it gets into the look and feel of the town, whether or not people are friendly, whether or not there's opportunity here.
Absolutely.
All those things.
Just want to kind of keep it in the back of your mind, though.
Yeah. Well, you know, when we were, when we went through the whole Culinary Center presentation, the whole idea that we assist the community college in building that program to give kids a pathway to have a career in culinary.
Exactly.
If we could get that going and some other things like it, I mean, we're making steps in the direction that you're saying.
Right, yeah, good, great, thank you. And I'll try not to interrupt much more.
Okay. And then, we're going to be integrating all the research we do. What I'd like to do now quickly is to show you the results of the ZIP Code survey. This was a lot of fun. Once we got the numbers and we, once we started to go through it, and we'll probably never be quite done with it, there's like a million ways to slice and dice the information. And there were some things we got that we didn't realize we had when we first got it. And it's been a lot of fun. Just quick background, we got ZIP Code data by month for calendar year 2014 from 12 Lincoln City lodging properties that included a couple of the big VRD management companies, so it was a blend of hotel motel and VRD. Total, total, we analyzed 59,000 check-ins. So, it was good, good sample size. And, you know, you get to where are our visitors from? When we looked at it top line, 87% come from the Pacific Northwest. You know, we get a whopping 4% from the rest of the entire West Coast. Canada contributes 3%, but for the most part, it's our backyard. So, break it down a little more finely, and you see Greater Portland giving us a third of our visitation. A third of our guests come from Portland. Another 20% are coming from the Willamette Valley. And from that point on, it gets finer and finer and finer and harder and harder to address on a market-by-market basis. So, our bread and butter is Portland and the Valley. One of the cautions I put out here is this 6%, the little green slice down there, that's Seattle. Portland has 2.67 million people, Seattle's over 3.5 million people. The media in Seattle is priced accordingly and is terribly expensive. So, I could dump a boatload of money into Seattle and probably pop that 6% up to 7%, or I could put that same money in Portland and probably go from 32 to 40. You know, in terms of where people tend to come from, which generally means how, you know, which markets will react the best to investment, right now, it looks like Portland and the Valley.
And can you just tell me the scope of the Valley? Are you going as far as Corvallis, Eugene?
The Valley would be south all the way through, like Eugene and Corvallis. I've got a breakout, I'll show you that in a second. If you look at just Oregon and Washington State, you can see that we, once you get to outside of the Valley and into the rest of Oregon and all of Washington, it's tiny little slices. You know, you've got the balance of the Oregon coast at 3%, 6% that big slice there again would be Seattle, the Volcanoes region at 3%. And this, those are the state designations for the.
It's like John Day and?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but in aggregate, all those towns, they don't contribute that much. And the, our two 800-pound gorillas are Portland and the Willamette Valley.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did you break that down by times of the year? For instance, the big summer season and then the shoulder seasons, et cetera?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll show you that in just a minute.
Oh, okay, good.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So, now, if they're going, if they're living in Eugene, they're going to go to Florence, chances are.
Right. Well, this is Willamette Valley.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if you break that up, 9% come from Salem, that's our biggest market out in the Valley. 3% is wine country, that's everything south of Portland until you get to Salem, that's McMinnville and Dundee and all those little towns combined, 3%. Eugene is 3%, Corvallis is 3%, and then everything else is 1%. That's how the Valley breaks up.
My question was, so if you advertise in Portland, Portland media drifts over into the Valley media.
Yeah, if you're buying broadcast.
Yeah, so you're getting, you're getting a double hit on that.
Right.
You're hitting both of our big markets with one stone.
Yeah, yeah. If you're into traditional broadcast TV, if you're doing newspaper, no. If you're doing, if you're buying cable systems, not necessarily. And we haven't built a media plan yet, we're still digesting all this. But one way to do it would be to buy television in Portland and just let Salem be covered by the spill. Now, the question came up, are the VRDs any different? And with only one exception that we found, not really, Pacific Northwest, 94%. And the VRD numbers are smaller, so you need to figure in a margin of error. They're going to be flakier because it's not as big of a base as the entire sample. But it's loud and clear that Pacific Northwest is the most important. Oregon is the most important, again, with Washington State coming in, and those numbers are about the same for the entire sample. And if you look at Portland, Willamette Valley, Central Oregon, and this is as fine as we could cut it because the sample base just was too small, it's the same thing. In the general sample with all 59,000 ZIP Codes, Portland was at 32%, this is showing 39. Here, the Valley is at 18. For the entire sample, it was 20. So, where they come from, VRD hotel, it's the same folks, in about the same proportion.
How did you get the ZIP Codes on the VRD guests?
The VRDs gave them to us.
Okay.
We went through some of the bigger management companies here in town.
Okay, the management companies, okay.
Yeah. So, one of the things we didn't realize until after we got everything was that we had a number of check-ins by month. We could just add them up and get down the column and see how many people checked in every month and plot them out on a curve. So, this is interesting. If you look at this, we get a pop spring break, that makes sense. It falls back down, builds up to a peak in August, then drops down to a low in December, which should reflect our seasonality. Looking at this, if you want to promote in the shoulder season, June and September and October, probably what we need to shoot at, those would be the shoulders of the peak that would be easiest to lift up. Again, are VRDs any different? Yeah, they are a little bit. You've got the peak for spring break, but you have a rounded peak in the summer. It doesn't go up higher than spring break. And I presented this at a meeting of lodging properties and it's like, you know, we're trying to figure this out. And one of the VRD guys came up, he goes, "It's simple, we have a five-night minimum." So, the hotels are turning over much faster than the VRDs are, ergo, there aren't as many check-ins with VRDs, ergo, we have the rounded peak here rather than the sharp peak that the hotels have. The other thing that's interesting is December kicks up. And the best guess on that is because VRDs tend to have families, and families will come and do Christmas here when they can all be together, probably not so much in a hotel.
Especially in New Year's.
Yeah. So, you know, slight difference, but definite difference between the VRDs and the hotels. This one is really interesting. We broke out Portland, the Valley, and Washington State to look at when they visited. And Portland, it's that peak in the spring break and another peak in August and goes down, it's exactly the same curve that we see in the general sample. Washington State, same thing. And you get to the Valley and they, there's a peak during spring break, it goes down and it flatlines for the rest of the year. There's no summer peak. And the best guess on that is that once we get daylight from 5:00 in the morning until 10:30 at night, they day trip. They're coming, but they're not staying in a hotel, which gives us a dilemma. That's 20% of our business, but what do we do so we're not just encouraging a bunch more day trips in the summer?
Well, I think that ties into what I was asking about combining some of the cities and their efforts so that we can stay one night in one city and the other. I did have a question, and I think it's reflected in your numbers, but the whale-watching campaigns in Depot Bay and the state have been doing an amazing job of that. And I don't know if Lincoln City's doing that, but I'll tell you, as my local stores, we did bang up business this year with the whale-watching. We had, you know, the combination of great weather and a three-day weekend, but I would highly suggest, recommend that we pursue that. It's a big draw.
Yeah, we've been promoting that in social media and in some other places where we're a great place to stay and either watch room, one of our oceanfront places, or, you know, take the trip down to Depot Bay.
Right, but we don't seem to have any whale-watching locations. I know we're not, situationally, it's a little different than Depot Bay, but we don't offer that here. You know, the state, the State Parks Department doesn't come here and say, hey, we're whale-watching.
Yeah.
And so, we're, I think we're missing the boat on that a little bit.
Yeah.
On your Salem graph that you have?
This one here?
One prior. So, I think one possible explanation for the data on the Salem is that it makes perfect economic sense to day trip. Price of a hotel's 100 bucks, say, and so you have a decision at 7:00 at night, do you go and spend $100 for a motel room, or do you go home 45, or an hour later and sleep in your own bed and save the money? And I think that decision's being made, but why you don't see a spike in the numbers, I think, is when you're planning your vacation, same as when you're eating out, you don't have dinner where you had lunch. And these people, when they vacation, they're going to another location other than the beach, which they day trip to all the time, that's my guess, but be consistent with my experience.
I can't argue that.
I'd be curious if other coastal cities have the same phenomenon or not. We're the lucky ones.
I guess it depends on who you're close to.
Well, I mean, if Mr. Ward's theory.
If Floridians see the same thing out of Eugene, I don't know.
Right, but we could speculate too, and I'm sure it's not true, but we could say, okay, they're starting here, but does Newport have a spike?
Yeah.
Because they're coming here and then they're staying there, or going up to Tillamook and staying. I just would just be curious if we're actually just losing to a day tripper or to somewhere laterally.
Yeah. We had the bright idea that maybe Salem is a problem, but if we went farther away like Eugene, we could fix it. And everything in the Valley does the same thing. A little bump at spring break and then flatline rest of the year. So, if you look at Salem, or wine country, or Corvallis, or Eugene, or everything else, it's pretty much the same curve.
I was just curious, because I know in my business, I didn't see a huge uptick in, I'm turning to you because you're the other food service guy here, at spring break. I didn't see the numbers that I was expecting. Did you, is that your, I mean, I just, I don't see a big crowd coming here at spring break like would you say seaside. That could just be anecdotal, I'm missing something, but are we, I guess we're actually seeing a better turnout?
We're getting check-ins, which is, all this is telling us.
Okay.
Yeah. Then, this one's hard to explain, so we have to do a little math in your head. I looked at the share of each market by month. So, the blue line right here, in January, Portland represents 40% of our business. In March, it represents 30% of our business. And the same with the Valley and with Washington. If you look at Portland, it's a U. If you look at the Valley, it's a U. If you look at Washington, it's more of a carrot, it pops up and goes back down, which means that during peak season, our farther out markets are doing better in terms of share of business in town than Portland and the Valley. And you can make the argument from this chart, if you want to lift the shoulder seasons, Portland and the Valley are probably better prospects than the Seattle's of the world. That's what we've gotten out of the ZIP Code study so far, but there's still a lot we need to learn. And we've got things plugged in in terms of make do. This is from the Longwood study. The guest age, who's visiting, again, I'm asking them nicely if they can give me these by season to see if it varies. The number of children in household for the coast, 62%, no children under 18, that kind of jives with what we saw with the focus groups, although I still don't know if I trust that given that it wasn't peak season when school was out. Average length of stay, 1 in 29. Average length of stay, one and two nights is the bulk of it, and then longer lengths of stay tend to drop off.
And then, just a -- I'm sorry, just briefly, I'm going to assume the two nights are Friday, Saturday? Do you have anything that backs that up?
Yeah, we're going through the traffic count study right now that David Hawker had been working with. And I've got Liz doing some graphs and whatnot based on the amount of traffic coming through town. And right now, it looks like an EKG chart where it's, and the bumps are weekends.
Okay.
So my guess is that weekends are driving it, and if the length of stay is only one or two nights, then that's weekend business.
Okay.
This is too long to go through line by line, but one of the things that made me feel good about the focus groups was it wasn't that far off the travel Oregon demos that they reported from their survey. So just a little internal check that gave me a little bit more confidence in the focus groups. So, as we're building the marketing plan, you're going to see Portland is our primary market. I'm going to, we're going to try to have enough weight and volume and message and repetition to move the needle. And the most important market, based on everything we've learned so far, and the one that's going to give us the best return is going to be Portland. The number two is the valley, and the valley's a double-edged sword. We've, it looks like we've got to watch, we don't encourage just a ton of day trippers to clog up the roads and not stay in the hotels. But on the other hand, it's still twenty percent of our business. So the trick there is, what do we do in the valley that's smart? Do we do nothing but present offers that require an overnight stay? You know, come up with packages and experience and things you've got to do, but there's no way you're going to do them in one day. Or do we just concentrate on the shoulder season and avoid that long, light, summer daytime when they tend to day trip? Or maybe some combination between the two. We need to do something with the valley, but we've got to be smart with it, or it's not going to put the heads in beds and get the TRT money up and have that overnight stay. This is going to result in a couple of meals and not just one.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Does, you've got here, the reason for travel is leisure. And is there, and this is probably another question for another group, but does the length of the stay determine why they travel?
No. Leisure means we're on vacation. Business means I'm here on a business trip. That's the designation there.
Okay. Because what I've been reading, especially say, like from the Brooks Report, is one of the major reasons people vacation is for the hiking and biking and the like. But if it's a, if it's a one-night trip, is there enough time to do those things? And I'm just kind of curious if there's a information in there.
Back when I was in Williamsburg, Virginia, I was working for Busch Gardens, we were a weekend getaway. That's what the market was. People would come in, average length of stay was two-point-one nights. But we had Busch Gardens, we had a water park, Water Country USA, there was Colonial Williamsburg, there was Jamestown Settlement, there was Yorktown Victory Center. We stitched all those together and called it the Revolutionary Fun Vacation. And this is way back pre-internet. We were doing it with eight-hundred numbers and whatnot. And we did infomercials. We're doing half-an-hour time blocks, walking you through all the stuff there was to see and do in Williamsburg, Virginia. We moved that needle from two-point-one to three-point-four.
Exactly.
And the way we did it was by showing folks that there was way too much to do here for only one or two nights, that this, and we really changed the use occasion of the town. We went from a weekend getaway to a full-week family vacation. I mean, we moved that town from where it was to basically being a competitor with Disney. So the trick, and I, you know, haven't thought it all the way through, and I'm not quite sure how you do it here in Lincoln City, but the trick is to tell them and convince them that they're not going to be able to do the town in just a couple days, that there's so many cool things to do here that they need that three, four-night stay to make it happen.
And I ask because a while ago, we got money to talk about developing the Trailhead and the like, and I voted for that simply because of the Brooks Report saying, "This is a major reason people come somewhere."
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that as we're moving forward with these projects and trying to, you know, gel what you're telling us, this will bring people, or it won't bring people, or just a waste of money to buy these things.
Well, let me go through one of the weaknesses of research. Whenever you do something like this, it's not a crystal ball, and it doesn't tell you the future. It tells you where you are right now. And right now is, in essence, the past. It's going to tell you how the folks who are already coming here, how we can get more like them, how we can make them happy. If we go through this and find out that it's all an older demographic, that, to me, is a big red flag.
Right.
And a lot of the folks we talked to, it's like, "Oh, my parents brought us here when we were kids, and it was so great, and we loved it, and we come back all the time." You need to make sure that you're feeding new ones in on the front end of that, where there's new kids having just wonderful experiences here that are going to grow up and bring their kids and, you know, come here and even when they're empty nesters. One of the questions I would ask is, this whole millennial generation, how do we start to capture them? And it's going to be things like hiking and biking and things that people of that age want to do because they're young and active and want to have fun. Those are our great customers who have been coming here a million years and love us twenty years from now.
And we can convert into citizens.
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough.
So, and that's what I have. We're going to keep moving along. I want to come in here sometime soon, and I promise it'll have fewer graphs and charts and maybe be more interesting. But we want to put together a full marketing plan, a full media plan for your review, show you how we're going to use the money. You're starting to get an idea of why we're going to do what we do. And I just would like to get general agreement that we're pointed in the right direction, we're talking to the right people, and we're doing things in an efficient manner that's going to give us the best return. So I appreciate all your time. This took a little longer than I thought, and it probably wasn't the most interesting.
My fault.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One thing that you might want to take into consideration when you're looking at things from the Willamette Valley is what is going on there? The Willamette Valley during, from about mid-March to early October, has a tremendous amount of things going on. Festivals, all kinds of things. And I think some of the, what you're going to find out is that a lot of things there are affecting people coming over here. Yeah. I mean, I lived in the Willamette Valley for way too many years. And we used to, on a Sunday or a Saturday, get from the car and go down Highway Twenty to Newport, visit Newport for a while, drive up to Lincoln City, have some dinner, do a little shopping, and drive home. We spent a day, and it was the ultimate day tripper. We would do that four or five times during the summer because it was nice at home.
Yeah.
There was no real reason to spend the night here. But it also was affected by local festivals. Over the years that I've been involved with motel, I've been involved, we have found that during the Rouse Festival, our business falls off. During the Oregon State Fair, our business falls off. Certain other things. Fourth of July, we're one of the few places left in the state of Oregon that has fireworks. So a lot of people are now coming here, whether they're staying in motels or day tripping, they're coming here because we do still have fireworks. But there's other things, like, we thought that we had a really good sensational thing going, only to discover that there were two wine festivals going on in the Willamette Valley, and it just canceled our whole advertising concept. So you have to be careful with what's going on there as well as here when you're trying to figure these, you know, like, why is it flat here? Why is it flat here? It might be because there's something there that's affecting it. Anyway, I just, football games, big football games in the fall, when Oregon or Oregon State are playing, you know, same thing. You know, you'll see a drop-off because a lot of motels around here don't have Pac-12, whatever. And if they're not playing on regular television or Fox Network, they don't want to come over here to watch the game because there's no game to be watched.
Yeah.
So they'll stay at home. So I mean, there's a lot of other dynamics. You have to be kind of careful when you're doing research, but, you know, basically what you have shown us, I went back and looked at some of our stuff since nineteen ninety-nine, and it's pretty much the same.
That's good enough.
So, it's certainly that, your information doesn't seem to be that far skewed off from everything else.
Okay. Great. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry.
Cool.
Mine's real quick. You know, there's, for years, we've said, "Don't advertise in the summer," because we're already full. And there's an opposing argument to that. And that is, if we are advertising in the summer when we're already full, what happens is, is it allows your lodging properties to be able to raise their prices, and it also shifts the burden of paying the TRT tax to the visitor and not to the hotels. And that also enables particularly the larger hotels who have a big capacity, smaller hotels, you know, run out of capacity pretty quickly. But it enables them to put money away and to provide employment, and that's from work that was done in the summer. You don't want to be so busy working for nothing that you don't make any money, but yet you're busy and you're just worn out. And advertising in the summer really does help the people be able to raise their prices. Not that I'm greedy, but there's a lot of space there that needs to be, that could be taken up and given to the hotels. I don't know if that makes as much sense as I wanted.
One of my other questions in the summer would be, is it just the weekends? Do we have room midweek? I mean, I probably have more questions than answers right now. But, you know, where do we have the room to grow? Where do we have the capacity? And the other thing, too, is I can advertise like crazy in July, and I bet our July numbers wouldn't go up, but they'd show up in September. I mean, we need to learn that planning timeframe, too. I was talking to one of the hotel owners when we did the lodging presentation of this information, and he was telling me that he's advertising right now for spring break and will shortly be advertising for deals in the summer because people will plan a couple months out. So the trick is, how far out? When are they thinking vacation, and when's the right time to talk to them? And I don't have that answer just yet, but we'll figure it out.
That's just a very good question.
Yeah.
I know the goal has always been to put heads in beds, but looking at the quantity of day trippers that we're getting, I know that they at least do something for local businesses. Does it make sense to try to draw more day trippers, realizing that they're probably not going to be heads in beds, but at least they would help do something for the local businesses? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, and I think I'd need to get counsel from someone as to which way to go with that. You can make the argument that they're going to buy a T-shirt and lunch while they're here, and they're contributing to the economy of the area. And if I had a restaurant or souvenir shop, I'd be like, "Yep, that's exactly what we need."
I would think so.
Yeah. So, you know, it's a matter of priority, and that's a big strategic decision. I don't know that I have an answer right now, but that's definitely something we need to look at.
I think we need to balance it if we can, but I realize we probably can't. It's probably not, it's not inherent in the way in which the whole thing works.
Yeah. I mean, Salem's tempting. It's not that big of a market. The media's really cheap. We could go in there and make a splash without a whole lot of money, but, you know, I don't want to be sitting in front of everybody here and have you say, "The town's full of cars, we're not making any money, and it's your fault," you know?
I just want to capitalize on any and all opportunities that we have.
Well, we, you know, we seem to have stumbled across a tendency, and, you know, people that want to come here, and it doesn't necessarily involve an overnight. We need to look very closely at it, and it has to make economic sense, but if there's a benefit and, you know, the town's making money on it, I'm all for it.
I don't know why the word spike strips keeps coming into my head. The flattened their tires make them stay. Quick question, this is kind of an oddball question, but where do we vacation at?
Where do we vacation at?
Yeah.
You have any?
What do we do?
Let me tell you a story. When I lived in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and I was working for an advertising agency, and the guy that was the head of the Convention and Visitors Bureau was my client, every year, he ran a big campaign in Chattanooga, and it was this year, vacation here, trying to convince residents not to go anywhere.
Staycation.
I don't think it worked.
I'd just be curious.
That or he pioneered the staycation, one of the two.
I'd just be curious. Anyone else?
Great. Excellent as usual. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you. That's it. All right. That's it. City manager, city attorney reports. I don't know who wants to go first. Mr. Chairman?
I just have one item. Mr. Mayor, we'd like to schedule a work meeting so that we can begin discussing systems development charges with you. Our staff has been very busy on this, and we'd like to schedule that for February first at three o'clock.
I don't know if I'm going to be here. God dang it. I don't want you to not have it, but I don't think I'm going to be here. My boss out there, I think I'm out of town.
Good.
I won't be here.
Oh, that's Constitution Day in Mexico.
My golly, you're right.
Three o'clock?
Three o'clock, yes.
And then, just so I'm clear, because I remember, can I participate in some way within that if I'm not here?
You can electronically, yes.
Okay. I think I might want to look into that because that's just something I've been wanting to talk about forever.
And we would be able to do that either through phone or through Skype type of thing.
Great. I think I would like to do that, if possible, if my boss says it's okay. Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Upjohn?
I have a couple of things. The estate today, the estate of William Upjohn was distributed. If you recall, Mr. Upjohn left one quarter of his estate to the city of Lincoln City, specifically for parks and recreation purposes. He had specifically wanted, desired to see a tennis court or tennis facility constructed or the covering of an existing court, and failing that, there's, Mr. Hawker had checked the possibility of maybe a multi-use court that could be used for both. So I must sign and return an acknowledgement of a check for two-hundred-fifty-eight thousand seven-hundred-forty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. And although I don't need a motion, I think just by way of acknowledgement for Mr. Upjohn, I think it would be appropriate for the council to pass a motion accepting the bequest.
Okay.
This is actually the final disbursement. There was a prior disbursement maybe two years ago. It's been ongoing for a while.
And is there anyone within the family for us to recognize and thank?
No.
Very generous. So I'm looking for a motion then to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Do I need a roll call to accept money?
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
I had a phone call from the county attorney today, Wayne Belmont, who contacted me regarding the need to address procedures for review of dock permits. The county has jurisdiction over the water, and the city, when it's in the city, has jurisdiction over the land. And this is an item that's actually addressed in a draft urban growth management agreement that's between us right now. But they have an ongoing need to get this formalized, and there's a current permit being processed that has in-water work deadlines. And so Wayne and I discussed the idea of bringing forward maybe just an abbreviated intergovernmental agreement that says, "This is how we're going to address these kind of permits." When they come into the county, if there are any landward improvements and it's in the city, the city planning director and building official will sign off, the building department, and basically-- department, and basically on the landward part of the improvement. So for your next meeting, you'll probably get an abbreviated intergovernmental agreement that'll get incorporated into a larger urban growth management agreement. But in the interim, in case the next meeting isn't soon enough for this in-water work, I'd like to ask the council to authorize by motion that the planning department and building department review and sign off on any landward improvements that, on applications that come into the county, when the landward improvements are within the city of Lincoln City.
Is that a request for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so moved.
Oh, second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Go right ahead.
Well, I don't understand it. So if we could, would you saying there would be a, an agreement between the two bodies, government bodies, as an interim until we get the other ones?
Yes. Okay, I didn't hear the word interim.
Okay. And in essence, the city would handle anything on land through our normal processes?
Well, we'll sign off on anything that they submit. So what's happened is the county building official has become hesitant to say that anything that's touching the land is his to say okay with. And he wanted, again, this has been going on for a while, and they just, they've reached a point where they want to formalize something. And between now and the next meeting, I'm just asking for a motion to say, "Okay, we acknowledge planning and building need to sign off if there's any landward improvement on an application that's submitted there." And they acknowledge that, and we acknowledge that. And then at the next meeting, hopefully, we'll have an abbreviated agreement to address processing these, and that agreement will be interim because it'll get incorporated into the urban growth management agreement later. The urban growth management agreement will address more than just this issue.
I can live with that.
It helps. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Just a roll call? Or all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Anything else, sir?
Just one thing. It's not my job to tell you, you know, just tell you what you want to hear. And I frankly don't really want to talk about VRDs, but I think I have to make a clarification that at the last two meetings, you've had an allegation that license renewals for 2016 will be limited to 90 days. And based on that, you've had people come to you and say, "We're worried about this and want some kind of assurance from you. Don't worry, don't cancel your reservations." Well, accessory use enforcement is, as I have described, it is a discretionary land use process, a process. Notice and hearing, a process. It can be accomplished with a Title 17 notice of violation letter, and if that doesn't work, a citation process, or with a license and land use revocation process. Again, process. Notice and hearing, revocation before the planning commission. The city performed exactly no accessory use, land use enforcement in 2015. That's despite a motion directing that it be done, and that's a problem, and we will need to talk about that. However, for now, just please understand that you can't change the law that applies to someone's business with just an offhand comment about the reservations at a council meeting. Fact is, this is a land use ordinance, and you can't repeal the accessory use limit by motion or proclamation or resolution or any other method other than an ordinance that is adopted and found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and tested for compliance with the Oregon statewide planning goals. So just for that clarification, that's all I want to say.
All right. And that do it? All right, thank you very much. Additional comments? Oh, I'm sorry, scheduling future meetings, that was yours, sorry. Okay, additional comments from citizens present on agenda? Well, you guys can fire it low. Mr. Clemens, Jim, okay. Did you have your hand raised, too? Okay.
Jim Hoover, once again Mayor Williams, members of the city council. Wow, I sat there and listened to this explanation by our city attorney, and I'm still not sure what that means. As a person who owns a business in the city of Lincoln City that deals with vacation rentals, as people who I know have vacation rentals are asking me questions, what it sounds like I'm keeping to hearing is that while you guys are the agency that can cause all these things that the attorney says to happen by calling people for the planning commission or citing them or revoking their licenses, I think those were three of the four that I heard, I'm not sure what the fourth one was, nobody wants to step up to the plate and say, "What's going to cause that to happen?" I think it's a very straightforward question. If you're going to threaten people and say, "We have the ability, although we didn't do it last year, we have the ability," and he said, "We need to talk about this because we didn't do it last year, but we have the ability to do it," what is the trigger that causes that to happen? Or are people supposed to simply run their business under the fear that by not getting a straight answer, they may have one of these actions that the city attorney just outlined, throw it out, and drug into a citation before a municipal judge, or drug before the planning commission, or have their VRD license expire or be revoked? Come on, this is a straightforward question. I understand you guys might have a really big problem, but the business people that have VRDs in the city of Lincoln City, maybe upwards of 300 or 400 of them, that contribute to the transient room tax that we talked about tonight spending, deserve to have a straightforward answer. The question is, if it's not 90 days, what is it? And to simply say, "Well, it's accessory use, but we're not going to tell you what accessory use is because you don't know what accessory use is." But if you exceed accessory use, we might drag your butts into court or before the planning commission, or we might cite you, or we might take you before the planning commission. That's a threat. And people deserve to have a straight answer. You may not like the answer, but let's have a straight answer. And if the straight answer is, "We can't drag you before all those agencies, we can't cite you, we can't take you to municipal court, we can't revoke your license because we have no definition," then say that so these people can get about their business and continue to rent rooms in their vacation rentals that they've got a license for. So I ask the question again, how many days does somebody who doesn't have a number on some past application or are not applying for a new application, how many days can they rent for? And if you guys don't know, say, "We don't know." The people deserve in the city of Lincoln City to get an answer from those people who are going to threaten them, as the city attorney veily did by saying, "This is an action that can be taken in a number of different ways." They deserve to know how to keep themselves from those actions and not have to guess at the number of days. You can answer it now, you can answer it to the media, you can answer it to a recall, you can answer it a lot of ways. But I think people deserve a simple answer to a simple question. So I'll ask the question again for the rest of my five minutes. How many days does a person have if they don't have a number on a previous VRD application and they're not applying for a new application? How many days does a person have if they don't have a previous number on an application and they're not applying for a new application? How are they supposed to run their business? How many days does a person have to rent their house if they don't have a number on a previous application and they're not applying for a new application? Again, how many days can a person, and some of you don't want to make eye contact with me, I understand that. It's a real pointed question. How many days does a person have? Mr. Anderson, would you like to answer that question? How many days does a person have if they don't have a number on a previous application and they don't have a new application they're applying for? I'm just responding to him throwing his hands up.
And I appreciate it, Jim.
So I'll ask a question again, my five minutes.
That'll be our last.
How many days, how many days does a person have if they don't have a number on a previous application and they're not applying for a new application? Is it 90?
One second, Jim. Anyone care to answer? No one's answering, Jim. So we're going to say it's good tonight.
I think the people of Lincoln City deserve to have an answer.
Thank you, Jim.
It's still yellow.
I understand that, but I also have the authority to say it's over.
One more thing. The packet for the VRD or for the VCB, I couldn't find it on the website on the meeting packet. So if it's available, if it can be put on there.
Yeah, I'll check with that because I don't think it was either. We got it here kind of late. Thank you so much. And, well, okay, Ed was up first, but I would have gone ladies first, but, you know, no, 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 no. No, Debbie was going to go. You go ahead. You go ahead. Yeah, I'm just teasing you. Come on up. Come on up.
Edward Clemens. I'll sit back from the mic. Is it, can you hear me okay?
We're doing great.
Just before, I was leaning like this.
It's all good.
Okay. I attended one of the summertime, I guess it was the citizen meetings that Mr. Chandler held to talk about the VRD issue. The one that I went to, Mr. Ward was also at, I think he attended. And one of the things that Mr. Chandler talked about, I think pretty much at the onset, which I totally agree with, was that in order for this hotly contested debate that's gone on for probably since I was a child, I don't know, or at least 10 years, I guess I wasn't a child then, but it's been going on for a while, in order for it to get resolved, there's going to have to be compromise. And I remember, I remember that really at the forefront, you know, Mr. Chandler's comments, I think were really articulate about that, that, you know, everyone on the extremes of each camp on this VRD issue are not going to be satisfied with whatever is deemed to be the final outcome. And so I sat there, listened, there was a lot of back and forth. I think it was a very civil discussion that I recall. But towards the end of the meeting, I said, because I, and I should back up and say, I heard a lot of things about concerns about noise during quiet hours and perhaps trash and the parking issues, you know, the ones that we normally hear about, that are talked about at these meetings. Some of the people said, "Well, I have not heard, you know, statistics about that. I've just heard people say there are trash, noise, and parking issues." But I tried to contemplate that during the meeting, and I asked towards the end, and I was sort of just thinking, I was shooting from the hip a little bit, which is sometimes dangerous. I said, "What if we came up with a situation where each VRD owner would step up to the plate and say, 'You know what? We validate those concerns, and we will put our money where our mouth is on validating those concerns,' and say, you know, we'll put whatever it is?" And I think I threw out a number like $50, which is probably too high, $50 a month towards enforcement, to have a dedicated number to try to, if somebody has a concern, they call that number, and within 30 to 40 minutes, there's a response, and 24 hours a day. And I recall people in the room saying, "Oh, that'd be wonderful. You know, that would alleviate a lot of these concerns." So I reached out to Mr. Chandler August 3rd, I believe, and said, "Hey, I'm going to investigate this a little bit, I'm going to look into it." We, I think, exchanged a couple of emails. But since that time, I've spent, when I'm not traveling or around the country trying to do my day job, I've spent some time researching this topic, trying to find a way in which we could structure a situation where people either voluntarily or mandated that are VRD owners pay for private enforcement, for enforcement of these issues. I came across in my research, and I was, I came across a man by the name of Mike Goff, Mr. Mike Goff in Newport, the president of TCB Security Services. And I was fascinated at what I found. And some of you may already know of this individual and his organization. But they already do nightly proactive patrols of vacation rentals in the city of Lincoln City. They do enforcement of VRD rules for parking, trash, noise, and occupancy. When they're contracted with a homeowner, they have a lawful contract agreement, excuse me, a lawful control agreement in place to act as an agent of the homeowner. They can work as boots on the ground to assist the owner and the city in gaining compliance with two issues. In some of the cities they work in, they're even sworn by the city to actually issue citations on behalf of the city when voluntary compliance cannot be reached. They operate a 24/7 dispatch center. Their dispatchers are able to gather information from callers and promptly dispatch an officer to address the problem. He told me it's generally 30 minutes because he's got, he's got people across the, from Newport up, several guys out, several cars. The officers are in constant dispatch, or excuse me, constant contact with dispatch center to log all patrols that are conducted. They have a dedicated number that anyone can call 24/7 to report an issue. And I know that's one of the things I kept hearing, "What's the dedicated number? They don't want to call the, what do you call it, the local representative? I think they sent out a deal that says, "Here's your local representative for like your VRD." May I continue this for a moment?
Real short.
Okay. All the, so currently, they're monitoring 170 homes in Lincoln City, VRDs in Lincoln City. All their patrol cars have computers installed that are linked to their dispatch center in Newport. With a click of a button, they can see how many cars are allowed for parking, how many guests are allowed, what the trash day is, and who the emergency contact numbers are. When an incident occurs, it's all documented in that computer system which goes back to dispatch. Reports can be automatically emailed to designated addresses when the dispatch or the thing is concerned.
I'm going to interrupt you, just for the sake of brevity here. What I would recommend, get that information to us in writing, send it to each council member. And it's great information.
Right.
And I think it's very well, but we're going to wrap up.
Sure, I understand. Can I, I'd like to just conclude by, and I had a little bit more to say, but I, it's, they do it through the, obviously through the quiet hours is when they're driving back and forth patrolling, and they'll go to every house. It's actually quite affordable. I had thrown out that shooting from the hip number of $50 at the meeting that Mr. Chandler was chairing, you know, "Everybody should pay $50 and do this for their home."
Thank you very much.
I think it can be about $10, maybe $20, and there's an a la carte menu.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Other things.
Send us, send us that information. It's good info and a good piece of the puzzle.
It's all about compromise.
Mrs. Williams?
Mayor and council, Debbie Williams. I'm glad you went first because it took a lot of what I was going to say and capsulized it, and at least part of the issues that were on the initiative that wasn't written properly. So what a group has gotten together and done is say, "Okay, well, if we want them to take away accessory use, we need to put some teeth into what we are going to be required to do." One of those would be education, and the ordinance or the initiative suggested a two-hour minimum education for vacation rental owners, which they would have to take a course and take a test to get a VRD license. And I think it was every three years that they would have to do that. The other is to sign up for that security service as a mandated security service, which would alleviate the city from hiring another enforcement officer and should alleviate most of people's issues with vacation rental dwellings. And the final one was limiting the number of vacation rentals as a percentage of the available housing stock that is dictated by the, what's it called? The, I can't even think of a word. I hate it when I do that. Anyway, the census. Thank you, gosh, census. So we would be, or vacation rental dwellings would be self-educating, self-policing, and self-limiting. These should hopefully alleviate the issues while still allowing a very healthy vacation rental business and also alleviating the fear of VRD creep. That's not all that I wanted to talk about, though. So when you're considering in your, and I really feel for the issue that you have about the 90 days, and you don't want to say that it's 90 days because you're all hoping that you'll have some kind of a consensus prior to that becoming an issue somewhere in the middle of the year. So I just give these as ideas for your own group that you come up with. Hopefully, you'll be able to come up with something that everybody can live with. The other thing I wanted to talk about was a meeting that we attended last night along with Kip and another planning commissioner.
Yeah.
Yeah. And some of the things that you talked about tonight, especially you, Kip, about the blight that is in the city and how we attract people. And so when you're going into your budget hearings, I would suggest taking a look at PDC's tax abatement program that they utilized in the North Portland and the southeast area we typically call. we typically call it felony flats, and how that renovated those areas. Because, you know, we go, we go a little bit of the way with the urban renewal funds, that's great, but we do have a lot of out-of-town owners that it's just so easy to just continue taking the rent. And they don't see their property that often, and they don't see the condition that it's really in. So in order to motivate them to do the, the upgrades that they need to do to keep their properties in good shape, you kind of have to give them a little bit of a carrot and a big stick. And that carrot could be a five, seven, something like that, your tax abatement for the improvements, along with the urban renewal funds, and then, and that would be the carrot. So it's going to financially benefit them to upgrade their properties, and then you have the stick that we start really enforcing our nuisance ordinances, so that they, if they don't do something, they're going to get a lien against their property. If you do those three things together, you get what Portland got in the North Portland area, which has become very gentrified and, and beautiful, and there, it's starting in the southeast area, where the PDC has put a lot of money in felony flats. So I would suggest those two things, and then, along with that, consider deferring or reducing systems development charges for contractors that might consider building workforce housing. And just really try to work with those people, and, and maybe even an economic development person for a short period of time to be able to get that going, because we really do have a problem with housing. And it's not really the VRD's fault, it's just the market. So, anyway, thank you.
I need that button at home. That worked. Great. I'm in deep already, it's good. She's going for it.
Gene Scruton, A1 Beach Rentals and Whistling Winds Motel. I'm going to try to stay positive here. I was thinking, I think this has been going on like eight years, I believe, and I was telling my wife the other day, it used, it was us against them, now it's us against you. Where's them? And this, this plays into it here, there was a NewsGuard poll this week, I think it ended today or yesterday, what is the most important challenge the mayor and city council was facing in 2016? The villages, homeless, other, or VRDs? And in last place was VRDs with two votes. So, anyway, there. And I want to talk about an incident that happened at 3263 Northwest Lee last weekend, in case anyone's watching, was there. It wasn't a big deal, but our manager at the motel found six mid-twenty's guys coming to our dumpster with twelve full black bags full of garbage and putting in there. I mean, that's a lot, six bags. So she made him take them out, so I, I went, and she followed him to the house, so I, I got the address and found out who owned it, called, they do have garbage service, it was overflowing, talked to some of the neighbors, had eight cars there. I worked with Tim Novak on it. And it's not a vacation rental, actually a minister in Portland owns it, so I don't know the details on that, if he's a youth minister or whatever, but it's just two blocks from the beach. So they had too many cars, garbage out front, plus tried to put twelve bags in our dumpster. And I just want to say, the people watching, sometimes when you see bad things happen down near the beach, it's not always vacation rentals. I mean, there's a lot, I, I very seldom see anything happen like that anymore. But anyhow, I was going to talk about the hospitality get-together Kip had, it was great. And Ed's just wonderful, I think he's a great hire. I mean, it's just, I know for years, trying to talk, the old VCB director, and to listen to some surveys we took, and, and it was everything that his survey came out and said. So it really feels like we're part of the city now. And just some thoughts that I had on that stuff. One thing to advertise, you know, about half the year, it's warmer in Lincoln City than it is Portland. I spent about fifty to seventy days there, and it seems like it's ten degrees warmer this time of year, and it usually is. My uncle, it works for us, he moved from Portland, lifelong Portland person, and he loves it down here. And I've always said, I said, "This is VP, VCB director, too, if we didn't have the casino and the weather cams on TV, you would not know Lincoln City's here." Absolutely no advertising. We've said it before, we drive by the Newport signs coming down there, we go down I-5, see the Rockaway signs, the Newport signs. I, they had a radio commercial for Estacada the other day on KXL. Estacada, which I couldn't believe, and you never hear anything about Lincoln City. But just a couple of things for Ed, I was thinking, a focus group of people that work in a business will give you a lot of information, like my wife's probably done over twenty thousand bookings over the last twenty years, and they just know everything. You know what I mean? And I've always said, if we had more fifty-year-old, fifty to fifty-five-year-old women that drove PT Cruisers and drank wine, this city would be full, because that's who mainly comes there. Something about women with other women, wine and the beach, no romantic part of it, whatever, I don't know what it is, but that's our main demographic there. And a couple of different things, too. One of the things about, a positive thing about VRDs and residential zone, is I think we've lost four customers over the last, since we started twenty-seven years ago, and three of the four are full-time residents here now. And a lot of people in our inventory right now have houses, they're late fifties, early sixties, and they're hoping to retire down here. And they're really worried about they won't be able to do that, but there's nothing better than to have a home to see if you can live down at the beach, because it is a little different than if you, especially if you come from a big town like Portland. But there's a gal that lives in my mother-in-law's church, and she moved down here and just loves it, and my uncle just says it's the greatest. So, like I say, a lot of those people do eventually, when they get older, move into their homes down, and they're pretty solid people. And another thing I was thinking, and you probably can't do it, but could we refer to Lincoln City as just Lincoln City Beach? I mean, it does not officially be changed, but in advertising and stuff, I mean, it's just a thought. I mean, Lincoln City Beach, and get that as kind of a, to be talked about more than just Lincoln City, if we're not going to go through a full change. But I think that was, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. A lot of good information. Anyone else? All right. Announcements or comments by city council? Mr. Anderson?
I'd like to take the opportunity, if I could, a couple of things from, I love public comments. Just for information, a lot of good things came out. One, for the citizens to know, we already have a, an ordinance on the books that allows for deferral, deferral, not waiver, not forgiveness, deferral of system development charges for specific purposes, such as childcare and affordable housing. So that's there, and I agree with the, I think it was Debbie's comments, they very much need for, for housing, but we've taken steps, and I'm sure we'll hear about that at our work session on system development charges. The other thing I hear tonight with the comments from some of the citizens, a word jumps out for me is uncertainty, and we've heard that often in the discussion, especially around VRDs and what's going on, or not going on. And uncertainty is what I heard heavily in the frustration voiced tonight. But I guess I point out that we really shouldn't be surprised. We, as the citizens of Lincoln City, created that. One, there was, and our ordinance is on the books around VRDs. Council before us worked for years on creating some kind of middle ground, and put it into an ordinance. So to give certainty, the citizens in May of last year chose to overturn those, and I think we're now faced with uncertainty because of that. And, you know, we're also recognizing the whole year that it's taken to get where we are, which is no ordinance in front of us, other than old ordinances. And as the city attorney tried to explain, there's a process, and as much as we may despise the process, you know, it's we, we the citizens who asked for it and created it. So I, you know, I'm as frustrated and concerned as anybody else, and, you know, we sit here today, you know, first of January, you know, with, with an ordinance, the one the voters voted for in May of 2015. And why the previous council did something different was because it wasn't the best you had. And we're now experiencing that. There's a lot of uncertainty and a lot of risk that goes on that. And I, the best we can do as a council is certainly move ahead promptly, but there is a process, and I think as we heard towards the end of last year, it's going to take some time. And, you know, even tonight, new ideas come in, which also muddies the water, not that they're good or bad, but, you know, they're just new ideas which keep coming. And that's hard to explain to, to citizens, but it's what we, we ask for.
Is that it? Anyone else?
Me. I'd like to thank the people that came up and, and gave positive testimony. I think it's far better to work collaboratively than confrontationally. Frankly, I can speak in allegations that somehow were disingenuous. That's not true. And we're all working very hard, and all of us have compromise on the mind, and working to stand up for all sides of the issues, which I think is why we're here. So that, that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have something to say. I wish I'd prepared something beforehand. The concern that we've heard in the last few meetings is about the definition of accessory use. Well, accessory use is part of a, a planning definition, and that, those are discretionary land use matters, those are not concrete things. Okay? What we are talking about is accessory use in residential zones. We're not talking about commercial zones where businesses are allowed. We're talking about accessory use in residential zones. Then people come and talk about the number of nights ruining their business. We're talking about residential zones. I want you to remember that accessory use in VRDs that we are discussing is residential zones, and we have a duty to keep residential zones residential. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I do. All right, just a couple of announcements, and I'll, I'll piggyback. I think, I want to thank everyone who spoke, whether I agree or disagree. I, I do, I do really appreciate people coming forward, and, because there's so many times when I've heard, "Well, nobody said anything, so we went one direction." Well, you've said something, and I appreciate it. So announcements, tomorrow night, I'll be cooking dinner at Celebrate Recovery out at Faith Baptist Church, Faith Baptist sponsors Celebrate Recovery, every Tuesday night. Give a free hot dinner to anyone who shows up, and then has a nice faith-based kind of twelve-step program, so if anyone's dealing with any addiction issues of any sort, come out, please. We have the Wood Carver Show at Chinook Winds Casino on the sixteenth and seventeenth. Get the honor of presenting the mayor's award to my choice of whatever carving I like. And if you have not been there, you are really missing a treat. It is an amazing show, some things that, I can't believe someone actually cut out a piece of wood, so realistic, so I'm looking forward to that. Touching on something that was brought up earlier, on the nineteenth, I will be at, and I would encourage anyone listening to go to, Facebook for Beginners at Oregon Coast Community College. And then they'll be followed up by an intermediary or advanced class. There's also a couple other networking classes. So go, go online, visit Oregon Coast Community College, it's on Lincoln City campus close by. Dave Price does a wonderful job of managing the Small Business Development Center. There's a lot of opportunities to expand your business and your business knowledge there. TAF Boosters meeting, 6:00 PM, at the New Mexico Restaurant, used to be Red Hook, which used to be Mulligan's. It's the big blue building. TAF Boosters will having their meeting about their upcoming auction, I think that definitely deserves our support. And then I'll be having another mayor's forum on the 21st, at the brand-new TAF's Meeting Hall, fully licensed and approved by the city. At 6:00 PM. Topic of discussion would be, what do you want from the city, in the city council, in the coming year? With that, nothing else. God bless you all, God bless Lincoln City. We are adjourned.
Oh, you're welcome.
I saw a sticker that said, "To me about my girlfriend, Oscar."
Oh, yeah?
And I heard I have that conversation.
You guys wanted to get together.
Yes.
And now, and I'm now back in town.